It is 5:30 PM on Monday, December 12th, and I'll call this work session to order. First on our agenda, our city updates. So Ms. Lano, please take it away.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Councilors and Mayor Gradisar. I do have two or three updates this evening from the city. And the first is a COVID update. This morning, the Public Department of Public Health and Environment, PIO Officer, held a unified messaging meeting with updates on COVID. The one-week cumulative positive case count had decreased from last week, and it was this during this past week, 195.9 reported last Monday, 208.3. And the one-week positivity rate is also down. It is 10.5% as of today and 13.1% reported last week. Pueblo County has nine days of declining or stable patient hospitalizations. And as of the report this morning, there are 17 COVID cases at Parkview, 11 RSV cases, six adults and five pediatric cases, and one case of influenza. And that is the COVID update with respect to the percentage totals. The National Weather Service is predicting low temperatures in the coming days. And accordingly, Mayor Gradisar has declared a temporary housing and shelter emergency beginning at 5:00 PM this coming Wednesday, December the 14th, and ending at 7:00 AM next Monday morning, December the 19th. So we're in for a stretch of cold nights. And this does allow the overnight warming shelter at Crazy Faith Ministries to open Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday into a Monday morning. Council winner has requested regular updates on the ARPA team-up to clean up trash plan for the city. And I do have a few updates since I last reported. The coordinator position interviews were held this morning, and an individual was selected for that position. There'll be more on who as it goes through the civil service and background check process. There are today seven applicants for the part-time positions. And Parks will move forward to begin to hire the part-timers now that the full-time coordinator has been hired. The first of four bulletins, bullboards, I'm sorry, community billboards were up today that were advertising the trash removal program and positions. There will be one on Main Street on Barnford and two initially on Fourth Street, with one of them on Fourth Street to move on to Northern in January. You can actually view this evening or today, from the interstate, the billboard on South Main heading south on the interstate. And there will be on Fox 21 running this week promotional commercial about the trash program and the jobs available as part of the We Are Pueblo Spotlight. And we'll bring the commercial for all to view at the December 27th meeting. That does conclude the city's updates this evening. And do you have any questions or directions on future information to bring to council?
Thank you, Ms. Lano, for those updates. What questions are there from council? Seeing none. I was also going to actually ask about the trash coordinator. When is the trash coordinator full-time position expected to start?
Madam Chair, as soon as we go through the rest of the background check and confirm the onboarding process, then the position will be starting with day one. I would expect it, I would like to say, within a week to 10 days, but likely due to the holidays, January the 3rd.
Other questions or comments from council? Counselor Maitri, did you have anything?
Yeah.
Um, perfect. Then the next, moving right along on our agenda is the American Center for Law and Justice, specifically Mr. Dixon, Ms. Mitchell, and Mr., sorry, Mr. Mitchell, Mr. Craddock. So can I have them to the podium, please? Whenever you're ready. I do believe is Mr. Mitchell on Zoom today?
Yes, correct.
Okay, I wanted to acknowledge that. Thank you, Mr. Mitchell.
Thank you for having me.
My name is Markley Dixon. I'm a director with the Right to Life of East Texas and founder of what's called the Sanctuary Cities with the Unborn Initiative. So there are 61 cities in the United States that have passed ordinances addressing abortion access. And then there's one county as well. This week, there is another city addressing it as well, and that's Odessa, Texas. They'll be voting tomorrow night on their final reading. We have seen, this began in June of 2019, and what brought this about is there was a abortion facility in Shreveport, Louisiana, that was looking at crossing the Texas-Louisiana border to a little place called Wascom, Texas, population 2,189. Wascom, Texas, did not want an abortion facility in their backyard. They're known for Jim's BBQ, David Beard's Catfish Village, East Texas Football. They didn't want to be known for an abortion facility in their community. And so what happened was the mayor expressed to me that they wanted an ordinance that would prevent an abortion facility from setting up shop within their city limits. Ended up reached out to my senator, Senator Brian Hughes, and he connected me with Jonathan F. Mitchell. Jonathan F. Mitchell, former Solicitor General for the State of Texas, was a law clerk for Justice Scalia. He's been quoted in court opinions by Alito and Thomas, and he is the architect of the Texas Heartbeat Act. At that time, there wasn't a Texas Heartbeat Act. The Sanctuary City ordinances paved the way for that. But we started to see that these ordinances accomplished the goal that they set out to accomplish. We saw in Lubbock, Texas, when Planned Parenthood expressed interest in setting up for the city, they set up in the city, and an ordinance was passed in Lubbock, and Planned Parenthood stopped performing abortions within the city limits of Lubbock, Texas. Lubbock is a very prestigious city. It's a city that is home to Texas Tech University, which has one of the greatest nursing programs in the United States. The city of Lubbock survived this ordinance. Planned Parenthood stopped performing abortions. We recently saw an ordinance of a similar nature pass in Hobbs, New Mexico. Whole Woman's Health, which had been driven out of Texas from the Texas Heartbeat Act and the various other abortion laws we have on the books in Texas, they ended up setting their sights on Hobbs, New Mexico, at four miles from the Texas border. Well, what happened in Hobbs? Similar discussion like you guys are having. And an ordinance was passed in the city of Hobbs, which required compliance to these federal statutes, 18 U.S.C. 1461 and 1462. That passed on November 3rd of, November 8th of, no, I'm sorry, November 7th of this year. And when that ordinance passed, we ended up saying Whole Woman's Health moved five hours to Albuquerque, New Mexico. These ordinances have a proven track record, and Jonathan Mitchell, my attorney, knows what he's talking about. We have seen victory after victory with these ordinances. And we are confident that if this ordinance were to be passed in your city, that Leroy Carhart would not be setting up shop here in the city. We also have one other example, and that is when we started the initiative in Bellevue, Nebraska, within days, Leroy Carhart expressed interest in relocating. And the city that ended up being on a GoFundMe page was Pueblo, Colorado. And so I am confident that if this ordinance were to pass, then y'all would not have an abortion facility within your city limits. And with that being said, I'm going to go ahead and pass the baton to Jonathan F. Mitchell.
Thank you, Mark, and thank you for having me tonight. Can you all hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Great, thank you. My role in this is to provide legal counsel to Mr. Dixon, but also to city councils and other local officials who are considering the proposed ordinance. So my role is somewhat different from Mr. Dixon, who's been more of the advocate behind this movement. My role is really to try to give candid advice to any government official who's considering the ordinance and to discuss what risks there might be, if any, to the city litigation-wise, if they were to proceed, and also to ensure the city is complying with its own legal obligations under federal and state law. The ordinances that Mr. Dixon advocated for in Texas are quite different from the ordinance that's been proposed to this city council. And that's because the legal landscape in Colorado is different from the legal landscape in Texas. And Texas abortion has already been outlawed across the board unless the mother's life is in danger. That's not the case in Colorado. Not only has the state legislature not outlawed abortion, they've passed something, the Colorado Reproductive Health Equity Act that purports to codify a state right to have abortion. So given that, the ordinance is worded quite differently from the ordinances that are enacted in states like Texas where abortion is illegal at the state law. There have been two concerns expressed about the ordinance that I want to respond to briefly, and then I'm happy to take questions from the city council or anyone else who's present tonight. The first is a concern that was expressed by some OB-GYNs at a previous meeting, that this ordinance, if it were to be enacted, would somehow prohibit them from obtaining through the mail or through shipments tools that might be used for abortion or devices that could, in theory, be used for abortion, that they have no intention of using for abortion. So these were OB-GYNs who do not themselves perform any abortions, but they were expressing concerns that if they order any type of device, stirrups or an operating room table or anything like that that might be used by an abortion provider, they would somehow be violating federal law and thereby violate the ordinance. That's not true. And one only needs to read the federal statutes to see that, 1461 and 1462. It is only a federal crime to mail or receive in interstate commerce a drug or device that is intended for use in abortion. So if there's no intent to perform an abortion with respect to that shipment, there is no violation of 1461 or 1462, and there would be no violation of the ordinance if it were enacted. And if the OB-GYNs are concerned that the proposed ordinance could land in legal trouble, they really should be concerned about the federal statutes, because the ordinance does nothing more than repeat what the federal statutes independently require of all individuals in the United States, whether they perform abortions or not. It's currently a federal crime to ship or receive abortion pills or any type of paraphernalia intended to produce an abortion in interstate commerce. Those statutes were not enforceable prior to Dobbs, because Roe against Wade established abortion as a constitutional right. They are fully enforceable now, and they are the law of the United States, and they're the supreme law of the land under Article VI. Obviously, the Biden administration won't be bringing criminal charges against people who violate those statutes for as long as President Biden remains in office. But the statute of limitations is five years, and a future administration could enforce them against anyone who violated the statutes within the previous five years to when that new president takes office. Second point I want to address is the Colorado Reproductive Health Equity Act. Because I've seen some statements in the media from people who are suggesting that the city council would be violating state law by enacting Mr. Dixon's proposed ordinance. That is not true, because the ordinance does not ban abortion. It only requires compliance with federal law. And the requirements of federal law trump anything that might appear in a Colorado state statute. There's a passage in the Reproductive Health Equity Act that says there's a quote "fundamental right," end quote, for an individual to terminate the person's pregnancy. That's what the statute says, but there's no fundamental right to engage in conduct that federal law has defined as criminal. And once again, this ordinance does not go even a millimeter beyond what federal law independently requires. That federal law currently is not being enforced by the Biden administration. But that does not eliminate 1461 and 1462 status as federal law that must be obeyed not only by abortion providers in Pueblo, but by every city official in Pueblo who has sworn an oath to uphold the Constitution and has sworn to defend federal statutes as the supreme law of the land under Article VI. So there's no conflict between this proposed ordinance and Colorado state law, because the ordinance is simply requiring compliance with Supreme Federal law that would trump any contradictory provision that might appear in the Colorado Reproductive Health Equity Act. So again, happy to answer further questions. I wanted to just rebut those two points that have been made in opposition to the ordinance. And I think this could be discussed more during the question and answer session.
Good evening. My name is Josh Craddock. I'm a Colorado attorney and a constitutional scholar affiliated with the James Wilson Institute, a legal think tank. I'm a graduate of the Harvard Law School and a former clerk on the U.S. Court of Appeals for the Tenth Circuit. I'm also a fifth-generation native Coloradan with strong ties to Pueblo. Actually, when my ancestors moved to Colorado, they settled here in the 1880s in Pueblo, and they're actually buried in the cemetery just down the road. So that's why I care so much about this proposed ordinance and why I'm offering testimony today, which is on my own behalf and not on behalf of any employer or client. This ordinance simply reinforces longstanding federal laws prohibiting the mailing and interstate carriage of abortion devices and drugs. In light of the U.S. Supreme Court's recent decision in Dobbs, these pre-wrote criminal prohibitions are clearly enforceable, and the state of Colorado cannot disregard or nullify them through RIA. Pueblo is on firm ground in enacting the proposed ordinance to ensure compliance with federal law and the federal constitution. So Section 1461 of Title Code 18 of the U.S. Code, first enacted in 1873, it prohibits mailing abortion drugs or instruments and states that, quote, "Every article or thing designed, adapted, or intended for producing abortion, and every article, instrument, substance, drug, medicine, or thing that is described in a manner calculated to lead another to use or apply it for producing abortion, is declared to be non-mailable matter and shall not be conveyed in the mails." Section 1461 establishes criminal penalties for anyone who violates this provision and, quote, "knowingly uses the mails for mailing or carriage drugs or delivery of items that will be used to kill an unborn child." So Section 1462, the companion section, was enacted in 1897, and it broadly prohibits the carriage of abortion drugs across state lines or national borders. It says, and that includes through a common carrier like FedEx or UPS, DHL, something like that, and it also includes websites as it was amended in the 1990s. So the law specifically extends the same criminal penalties as Section 1461 to, quote, "whomever brings into the U.S. or knowingly uses any express company or other common carrier or interactive computer service for carriage in commerce, any drug, medicine, article, or thing designed, adapted, or intended for producing abortion." So these are also included in the latest edition of the U.S. Post Office's Publication 52, which reiterates that these are non-mailable for the post office. So it's, you know, current, not only currently codified as federal law, but the post office, it's on their own regulations. The federal code also provides secondary liability for those who would aid or abet a violation of these statutes. Congress also established that violations of 1461 and 62 are predicate offenses that can give rise to violations of the Racketeer Influenced and Corrupt Organizations, or RICO Act. Consequently, the federal RICO provides for extended criminal penalties and civil causes of action against people who violate these statutes. Interestingly, Colorado's RICO statute also provides that a violation of 1461 and 62 qualifies as predicate offenses for the state RICO's criminal and civil liability. Now, let me be clear, nothing in either the proposed ordinance or these federal laws would prohibit or restrict access to drugs or devices that are designed to treat miscarriage or ectopic pregnancy. Carhart and the pro-abortion lobby are using these scare tactics to mislead bubblons about the proposed ordinance, and they're using the tragedy of miscarriage to promote their abortion business. First, the proposed ordinance specifically states that it has no effect on treatment for miscarriage. The ordinance is clear in its definition of abortion that no private civil action may be brought against any person who acts with the purpose to, quote, this is from the proposed ordinance, "remove a dead unborn child caused by spontaneous abortion," that is miscarriage, "or remove an ectopic pregnancy, the implantation of a fertilized egg or embryo outside the uterus." So that's specifically excluded from the private cause of action that this proposed ordinance would create. Second, federal law doesn't prohibit the transport or use of medications and devices that are used to treat miscarriage. As Mr. Mitchell explained, Sections 1461 and 62 require intent or knowledge that the drug or device would be used for producing an abortion. That is the intentional killing of an unborn child. Based on the statutory text, nothing in 1461 or 62 prohibits the mailing or interstate carriage of a drug or device that, though capable of producing an abortion, isn't prescribed or intended for a legitimate medical purpose, such as treatment of a miscarriage. As the Secretary of the Department of Veterans Affairs explained in a July 2022 press conference just a few months ago, treatment for ectopic pregnancy and miscarriage is, quote, "not abortion services," period. This is further reinforced by the fact that under these federal laws, a medical procedure that's necessary to save the life of a pregnant woman is also not considered abortion. So in short, neither the proposed ordinance nor federal law would prohibit any physician from obtaining the medication and supplies necessary to treat miscarriage or to save the life of a pregnant woman. Now, some have also mistakenly argued that Sections 1461 and 62 provide an exception for elective abortion that is otherwise lawful under state law. This is contrary to the plain text of the law, as well as the congressional intent in enacting it. The law clearly establishes a crime to send by mails or interstate carriage drugs or devices with the intent or knowledge that they would be used to cause the death of an unborn child in an elective abortion, regardless of state law. The proposed ordinance simply supplements enforcement of these federal laws by allowing private parties to bring civil actions. I would also note that the proposed ordinance here does not allow a private right of action against pregnant mothers who seek or obtain abortion or abortion drugs. Sections 1461 and 1462 have been the law of the land for about 150 years, and they're fully in effect today. They provide much-needed safeguards to protect women and their unborn children from dangerous abortion drugs and devices. The abortion industry's activity in the city of Pueblo is unlawful, and it's shameful that the abortion industry is being allowed to violate these federal laws. In my opinion, the ordinance is well-calculated to ensure compliance with federal law and should be adopted. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dixon, Mr. Mitchell, and Mr. Craddock. What questions are there from council? Councilor Flores, and then Councilor White.
What other cities in Colorado have adopted this, either cities or counties have adopted this ordinance? Pardon me?
Currently, no city or county in Colorado has adopted this ordinance. You guys would be the first if y'all were to pass it.
And how many of the cities that you cited, I think it was 62, are the majority of those in Texas?
So a total of 48 cities are in Texas, and then we have one in New Mexico, and then we have a county in New Mexico, and then we have eight in Nebraska, one in Iowa, one in Louisiana, and two in Ohio have passed it.
Most, this is to one of the lawyers, most cities have what's called a preemption from, in fact, we have one here in Colorado. And it says, "Conflicts may arise between state law and ordinances passed by home rule cities, of which were one." And the Colorado Supreme Court has adopted a preemptive doctrine in order to establish a priority between conflicting laws enacted by various levels of government. And there is a citation there. So, and there's three broad categories, and they all more or less give a city like Pueblo no authority to preempt or abridge any kind of law that the Colorado Legislature passes. And I'm wondering, could you explain to me whether that preemption there has any weight to a council like ours?
Mr. Mitchell, do you want to go first, or shall I?
I can answer that. Yes, so you're correct to say that the city council of Pueblo cannot act in a manner contrary to state law. And if there is a conflict between state law and a city ordinance, the city ordinance would need to get away. In this situation, it's not the city ordinance that's creating the conflict with the Colorado Reproductive Health Equity Act. It's the federal statutes, 1461 and 1462, that create the conflict. And because there is a conflict there between the Reproductive Health Equity Act and the federal statutes, it's the federal statutes that will displace the state law in that particular situation. Now, we're not suggesting that the Reproductive Health Equity Act is completely preempting by 1461 or 1462. That's clearly not the case, because neither 1461 nor 1462 ban abortion. All they ban is the shipment of abortion pills or abortion-related devices or paraphernalia, or the receipt of such drugs or paraphernalia in interstate commerce. And that's all this ordinance does. It simply repeats the requirements that federal law independently requires. So that's why there's not a problem with state law in this narrow situation preempting the ordinance, because state law has already been displaced to the extent of the ordinance by federal statutes, 1461 and 1462, which are the supreme law of the land.
The, our own city charter establishes kind of the same roadway, that this city council really has no authority to be circumventing state state laws or state statutes. So, you know, my position on this is that this city council shouldn't be involved in this kind of issue at all. You know, we don't have the authority. The state dictates that through the Colorado Supreme Court. And but anyway, that's my position. But the question is, explain to me why the provision about all of these medical devices and pills, as I understand, that law's never been enforced. And can you give me an example of enforcement of that during the Roe v. Wade period?
Yeah, Mr. Flores, if I could speak to your first concern first, as to the city charter. The charter in Section 3.5 provides that the council shall have, quote, "the power to adopt all ordinances conducive to the welfare of the people of the city and not inconsistent with this charter." And it goes on to say that the council holds, quote, "all legislative powers of municipal government conferred by general law, and that the council shall, quote, 'faithfully execute and comply with all laws, ordinances, regulations, and resolutions, including those laws of the United States of America.'" So respectfully, I think that the city charter does provide the council authority to enact this ordinance. With respect to your second question about enforcement during the Roe period, these laws were not enforced during the Roe period because of Supreme Court precedent in Roe and Casey that said that there was a constitutional right to abortion, which the Supreme Court in Dobbs has now rejected. So it was not, it was not applied between 1973 and today.
You didn't address the preemption clause that the Colorado Supreme Court is dictating to us specifically as a city council.
Yeah, and I believe, Mr. Mitchell, I believe he kind of addressed that, why there's no conflict there. I would also reiterate that I think it's Article 20, Section 6 of the Colorado Constitution, provides that home rule cities are vested, quote, "with, and they shall always have," quote, "all other powers necessary requisite or proper for government and administration of local and municipal matters." And that section also, quote, "grants and confirms the full right of self-government in both local and municipal matters." And so respectfully, I don't think there's a conflict between the state law, this ordinance, and also I think that this falls squarely within that self-government provided by the Colorado state constitution.
Respectfully, I disagree with you on that, because I've got three tests, three tests that the Colorado Supreme Court has given to city councils like ours, and they don't agree with your assessment there. three tests that the Colorado Supreme Court has given to city councils like ours, and they don't agree with your assessment there. Today, I also happen to have looked at the two-hundred-and-sixteen-page Supreme Court decision. And I found this interesting, and this is, this is Judge Kavanaugh, and he made the following statement. And I quote, "On the question of abortion, the Constitution is therefore neither pro-life nor pro-choice. The Constitution is neutral and leaves the issue for the people and their elected representatives to resolve through the democratic process in the states of concerns, like the numerous other difficult questions of American social and economic policy and the constitution that the Constitution does not address." This is, this is Kavanaugh that actually affirmed this, and he's saying that, you know, that, that they're neutral on it. And it sounds to me like you are bringing in the Constitution as a, as one of your points of making that we do have an obligation as a city council to kind of go around, around the backside and indicate that we somehow have the authority to do that. That's, that was just a statement, not a question, but if you want to address that, you go.
Yeah, thank you for that. I, I think that Justice Kavanaugh, writing for himself alone in that opinion, you know, he's, he's expressing his opinion about what the Constitution says. And I think regardless of whether you agree with that statement, I think that federal law in fourteen sixty-one and sixty-two is clear. And so that's what's supreme over state law that would be to the contrary. And so the only place that the Constitution really comes in here is in the supremacy clause of Article six, which says that federal law is supreme over conflicting state law. So that, that would be the only constitutional argument that's being made here. It's purely a question of federal law preempting contrary state law.
Thank you.
Counselor Winner.
Thank you. To add to that, add to that, I think that it's fine for a home rule city to, to over-rule state if the, if the ordinance is more strict, for lack of a better word, than the state. Do you know anything about that?
Yeah, my understanding is that Article twenty of the, section six of the Constitution does guarantee a right of self-government to home ruling cities, and that home ruling cities have wide latitude to legislate through ordinances on issues of local concern. And so because there's really no, the, the issue is really not a conflict with RIA. The issue is RIA's conflict with federal law that's supreme over that. There's nothing in this ordinance that would conflict with state law, and so that's why I don't think that really preemption even comes in here.
Okay, okay. And then also, can you, can you talk a little bit more about how abortion clinics are not regulated at all, and you do not have to be a physician to perform an abortion?
That is, that is my understanding of the law, and I also, you know, I'm familiar with Dr. Carhart primarily through the Supreme Court cases that bear his name. At least two Supreme Court cases in the last twenty years, he's gone to the Supreme Court to defend partial birth abortion, which is where the baby is primarily delivered all the way up to the head before the abortion is performed. And Justice Kennedy, who actually was one of the members of the plurality in Casey who upheld abortion, called those abortions, those partial birth abortions, shocking.
Yeah, definitely. Oh, also, if you want to touch on the ordinance, how it states that it definitely doesn't have anything to do with the morning-after pill or birth control, that's clearly in, in the ordinance. We've had some comments that there, that you won't be able to get the morning-after pill or birth control pills or any other kind of birth control.
One thing that we've recognized is there's a lot of misunderstanding when it comes to the difference between RU four-eight-six, which is the abortion pill regimen, and the morning-after pill, Plan B, which you get at CVS, Walgreens, Walmart, et cetera. This ordinance does not prohibit any kind of mailing of Plan B or the morning-after pill or birth control. This strictly deals with RU four-eight-six, the abortion pill regimen.
And that's explicitly stated in the definitions of abortion and says these, the term does not include the use of any other type of contraception or emergency contraception, including Plan B, morning-after pills, or intrauterine devices.
Okay. Also, I wanted to point out that insurance doesn't cover any abortion, and Medicaid doesn't cover abortion unless the mother's health is at risk, rape, or incest. So kind of talking a little bit about rape. In the ER, when somebody's been raped and they come in for a rape kit, they're given the morning-after pill. So we're talking about a very small percentage there. Incest is a very, very small percentage. And when you talk about the risk of the mother's health, you know, as you know, in later second trimester and into the third trimester, and at an abortion clinic, that's a three or day, three or four-day process, because they, they introduce a drug to cause the decline of the, of the baby and until it dies, and then, then they're given medication to induce labor, and they, they give birth to a dead baby. When a mother's life is at risk generally in later second trimester, third trimester, they don't go to an abortion clinic. They generally end up in the, in the OR, in the operating room, with a C-section, and now you're dealing with two patients. That's generally how something like that goes on, that, that the risk of the mother's health in an emergency is not happening at an abortion clinic. I have a real issue with what's going on with Carhart. You know, he, he doesn't have a very good reputation. There's several malpractice suits against him. And, and just the fact that he's, he's training people that are non-physicians to do this and just posted his license. He's not even, he's not even at the clinic. He's like ninety years old. So to me, this is just a chop shop that's coming to Pueblo, and I have a lot of concerns about women's health in that regard. This doesn't outlaw abortion. It's just outlawing, hopefully, this, this particular abortion clinic.
Other questions or comments? Or Tensio?
Didn't the Supreme Court leave it up to the states to decide whether abortion was legal in their states or whether they wanted it? And my question is that, does that supersede that federal law you're talking about? How can the Supreme Court decide that the states are the ones to decide whether abortion is available or whatever, and then yet use state, federal statutes, federal laws to enforce abortion? Isn't there a conflict there?
Mr. Counselor, that's a great question. The Dobbs decision specifically was interpreting the due process clause of the Fourteenth Amendment to hold that that due process clause did not have a right to abortion. And so by implication, it says, they said that the states and the people and their elective representatives, including the states, but also, right, the elected representatives in this room, are going to make abortion policy. They were not presented with or interpreting federal law, which was enacted under Congress's power to regulate interstate commerce. And so states may choose abortion policy under Dobbs, but they still, states and localities and any individual still has to comply with federal law under fourteen sixty-one and sixty-two, which again, don't ban abortion, but they ban the interstate carriage and mailing of abortion devices and drugs. So to be clear, the Dobbs decision was not speaking about federal law, and there's no contradiction between saying that the Constitution is silent on abortion and saying that federal law does have something to say about abortion.
Is there any reason why we haven't been supplied with that federal law anywhere? I haven't seen it.
No, but I'm happy to provide you with a copy if you'd like.
Love a copy. Not only that, I would like to see the arguments for the enforcement of that law. I don't have to see it right now, but I'd like to see it. Also, the law, the federal law, does it state that the mailing of abortion materials are only illegal if used illegally? If used legally, then it's not a violation?
That's correct. So the, the federal law specifically says there's knowledge or intent or purpose to procure an abortion. That, that's what it criminalizes.
Well, I think the question was whether. That state law doesn't criminalize abortion.
The federal statute doesn't depend on whether the abortion is legal under state law. What, what the federal statute turns on is whether there's intent to use the mailed device for abortion. So the question is whether this drug or device, whatever's being mailed, is there intent either by the shipper or the recipient, or both, to use it for abortion? Whether it's actually for abortion doesn't matter at the end under federal law. And whether the ultimate abortion is legal under state law doesn't matter either. The taxes available, you can, you can just look up the taxes, type in eighteen USD.
My question is, does the federal law allow it, the shipping of abortion materials if it's going to be used illegally? Or not illegally, but is it a violation if the user is going to use it illegally?
It doesn't matter whether the user's going to use it illegally or illegally. What matters is whether it's been shipped.
That's my point.
And whether, and whether it's being shipped for the intent of producing an abortion. Whether it's ultimately used for that end doesn't matter. And whether the ultimate abortion is legal under state law doesn't matter either.
You have to be more clear.
Sorry, maybe if I could explain, I think, I think what he's saying is it doesn't matter whether, under state law, elective abortions are permitted or prohibited. The federal law will still apply regardless.
If the user intends to use it illegally.
No, not illegally. If the, if the user intends, mails or receives it with the intent to procure an elective abortion.
Does it, or does it not say in the federal law?
It does not.
It does not.
No, it does not.
It only states that if someone intends.
That's correct.
Also, if, if an OB-GYN at one of the hospitals, potatoes, patatas, they're doing abortions, I don't care what you call them, can at some point somebody, under the section where they can sue, can an individual sue one of the OB-GYNs at the hospital? Because I don't care what you call it, they're still doing abortions. You know, you might want to call it whatever you might want to call it. They're still denying birth to a fetus. You know, I don't, you, you might not want to call it abortion, but that's exactly what they're doing. Whether they, it be legal or illegal, or whatever you might call it, they're still terminating a life. Am I, am I wrong? Why are you not, why is it okay for them and not okay for this other guy?
I'm, I'm not sure I understand your question. Are you talking about treatment for miscarriages?
Yeah, or, or.
Yeah, sure. Well, for treatment for miscarriages or ectopic pregnancy, those are explicitly excluded from the definition of abortion in the ordinance.
That's an excuse. It's still an abortion. You know, in other words, what you're wanting to do is to let these women go through the process, whatever it might be, and, and not have health treatments.
Respectfully, I don't think that's the case. If this ordinance were to pass, no private civil suit would be able to be brought against an OB-GYN in those cases.
Okay, another question is under the section where a person might be able to bring lawsuit to someone. If I allow this abortion clinic to go in and somebody wants to sue me, can they do that?
Just wanting to allow the abortion clinic?
Yeah. If I vote, if I vote to allow this abortion clinic to go in, will, will, can an individual out there, no reason, sue me?
I, I don't understand that to be a violation of federal law, so, so no, I don't think so.
No, it's a violation of the ordinance.
Well, the ordinance only provides a cause of action for violations of federal law.
By voting to let this abortion clinic go in, and it goes in, and someone has an abortion, I aided and abetted an abortion, and I be sued.
But abortion's not illegal.
The people in the chambers, just really quickly, to please be respectful throughout this work session. So please silence your comments, your hymns and your haws in, as we're trying to discuss this on the dais. Thank you. Sorry, Mr. Mitchell.
I'm sorry.
It's your ordinance, come on.
The ordinance does not make abortion illegal, so you can't be sued for aiding or abetting an abortion. There's nothing illegal about abortion under this ordinance or under federal law.
That's not the way.
I think the, the only thing that's illegal is to ship or receive abortion drugs or devices in interstate commerce. So if you're allowing an abortion clinic to open in your city, you haven't violated federal law unless you knowingly aided or abetted the shipment or receipt of abortion drugs or abortion-related paraphernalia. And I don't believe the fact that you was a council member or allowing an abortion clinic to set up shop in the city makes you somehow complicit in the shipment or receipt of whatever's coming and going through the mail at that particular clinic.
Yes, but an individual, if he wants to, can file suit.
Oh, sure, they can file suit, but, but if they, if they sue you for aiding or abetting an abortion, it's going to be thrown out under the ordinance, because the ordinance does not make abortion illegal.
Then why would I allow even it, for it to go even that far? Codifying, putting it in, in the code that people can sue me for aiding and abetting an abortion.
You, you can't.
That's exactly what I'm doing if I allow this, this clinic to go in, correct?
No, you can only be sued if you violate the federal statutes.
No, I can be sued if I violate the ordinance.
Right, that's right. But the ordinance tracks the requirements of federal law. The ordinance is not banning abortion in Pueblo. The ordinance is simply requiring abortion providers to obey the extant federal statutes, fourteen sixty-one and fourteen sixty-two, to make it a crime to mail or receive abortion drugs or abortion-related devices in interstate commerce. That's all the ordinance does. It doesn't go any, any, even an inch beyond that. Abortion still remains legal in Pueblo under this ordinance, and abortion still remains legal under federal law.
That's, that's another issue in that all of the folks that are against the clinic, you've been bamboozled. This mainstream makes you think that we're outlawing the clinic, which we are not. We are not outlawing the, if we pass this ordinance, we are not denying this clinic to go in. If this clinic goes in, can they drive to Texas and pick up abortion materials? Or New Mexico, or Nebraska, or wherever they might go to pick up abortion materials? Webos, and they go there to pick up their abortion materials, whatever they might be.
If they do that, they're violating a federal statute. They will not be prosecuted by the Biden administration, because the Biden administration won't be enforcing these federal laws for as long as President Biden's in office, but they will be committing a federal crime, and the statute of limitations is five years. So.
What if they do it in their own personal, personal vehicle?
The statute bans mailing, and it also bans the transportation and interstate commerce. So if you're taking your personal vehicle over state lines, that falls within the prohibitions in fourteen sixty-two. Forty-sixty-one deals with.
Or transporting it for the purposes of sale.
Right, that, that, that type of transportation is prohibited by fourteen sixty-two. Forty-sixty-one deals with using the mails for abortion drugs or paraphernalia. So.
Are other health facilities in the city that provide services to women licensed within the city? I understand they have other licenses, hospitals and everybody else has. But are other the health providers?
Not to my knowledge.
Then why this one?
I believe the ordinance would create a licensing structure to ensure compliance with federal law, to ensure that this particular health clinic or any other health clinic in Pueblo doing this would be complying with federal law, and so it's simply an exercise of ensuring that compliance with federal law within the city of Pueblo.
And then lastly, is to Mr. Dixon, are you on retreat?
I am not.
And why are you here?
I'm here.
You could excuse yourself. We had, this was primarily for legal opinions, not with all due respect, you have no business here. Thank you.
Counselor, Counselor Martinez-Rutega. Counselor Mashi?
Yes. How many ordinances that have passed, how many of those cities have abortion clinics presently in them? In the sixty-one cities, how many abortion clinics are? In the sixty-one cities, how many abortion clinics are allowed?
The sixty-one cities and the one county, which I've been involved in all of them, which is why I'm an expert on the subject as far as being involved in that process. None of them currently have abortion facilities performing abortions.
How many abortion cities have the abortion clinics moved out of?
So Lubbock did have an abortion facility in operation. Uh, they stopped performing abortions. Now they're doing other services, but they're not performing abortions. Which this ordinance, if we're to pass here, Leroy Carhart still could do other services. Women's healthcare services, he just couldn't perform abortions. Now Hobbs, New Mexico, Whole Woman's Health was under negotiation to open up a facility there. When the process was moving forward and the ordinance was introduced to the Hobbs New Mexico City Council. Negotiations fell through with Whole Woman's Health and they decided to move five hours to Albuquerque, New Mexico.
Um, since we have, since abortion is legal here, but it's not regulated. I I researched and I see that there's only three regulations according to abortion. Um, two of them are about financials. Uh, if you're a public employee, your insurance can't pay for an abortion. If you're not raped, a victim of incest or life threatening situation, then you can't apply for public funding in order to receive an abortion. And the third one had to do with parental notification, not consent, but notification. So when we talk about opening, having abortion clinic open here, my concern is is that it's not regulated. I'm going to ask you a question. Because abortion isn't regulated and because we have abortion is legal within the state of Colorado and because uh, the RIA act is in place and say a a a pregnant woman goes to her doctor for nine months, it's time to deliver and during delivery with a private doctor. And her ba- she's, she's crowning, she has the right to terminate her pregnancy, doesn't she?
That's correct, according to my understanding of RIA.
What is the liability for the doctor if they choose to not terminate her pregnancy? Because it says in the law, abortion is legal. They must, you know, they must comply with the patient. And at that point, what type of termination would you do? What's really interesting to me with the state of Colorado and legalizing abortion is there are no regulations in place that make it safe for a woman. Because they allow doctors like Dr. Carhart, so he posts his license at our local clinic and yet who knows who's performing the abortions and their training because there's no regulation and he has a history. And is that what we're wanting here in Pueblo? And you know, um, this does not make abortion illegal. But what it does say to our community is that we should hold the line until the state gets it together and puts some regulation in place that makes it safe for women. Women, we talk about women's right to choose. That doesn't mean we sell them down the the tubes. We should, we should also regulate so that they receive quality, safe healthcare. And so um, those are my concerns in bringing this ordinance to our city. Um, and we have the opportunity to do this. It's legal. We can do it within the charter. We can do it right here on council. And that is, nobody from council's ever called me and said, Regina, what are you thinking about this ordinance? Why are you bringing it to the table? No, everybody's stuck on their own ground of what they thought. Never once asked me, but you know, I'm I'm just asking council to consider the safety of women in this. Women need, they don't just need the right to have an abortion, they need to have a safe, quality healthcare when it comes to this procedure. And it, you can only do that through regulation. So if we want to be complicit with the irresponsibility of legislation to have abortion come into place but not regulate it. Then there are just way too many open ended questions and the history of Dr. Carhart. We we can't be desperate enough to just want to take another community's throwaway because he's been chased out of uh, their other communities. Why would we say, oh, sure, come here? And so that's probably a comment, but but I was wanting to know, does that leave a doctor open? I mean, that's just, that's what I'm saying. The lack of regulation puts that back on the medical community for doctors who want to um, have babies and, you know. Uh, there's healthy babies being born. A doctor, that puts a doctor in a really difficult situation because of the lack of regulation on that. Thank you.
Mr. Craddock, does this ordinance in front of you, this specific ordinance, does it regulate abortion providers at all, at all?
My understanding is that the city of Pueblo would not be regulating abortion providers whatsoever. It only provides a cause of act, private cause of action to enforce compliance with federal law.
But when Counselor Maestri says we need to regulate abortion providers, this ordinance is not regulating abortion providers.
The city of Pueblo itself, uh, other than, well, so the the private right of action does not. There is a licensure requirement that that is the city of Pueblo regulating abortion providers. And so that licensure requirement would. Um, so I guess it's important to think about the two different parts of the ordinance as proposed.
And when um, you say that that um, at the federal level, right now abortion clinics are violating fourteen sixty-one and fourteen sixty-two. Um, and there's, you're saying that it's simply not enforced because of Biden's administration.
Yes, that's correct.
So help me understand then why the the US attorney is not calling Planned Parenthood in Springs then, if it's violating fourteen sixty-one and fourteen sixty-two?
Well, the US attorney is uh, answers to the Department of Justice and Attorney General Garland and ultimately to the president. And so uh, the if the administration's policy is not to enforce it, then no US attorney would just go rogue to uh, to enforce the law. If the administration is determined it won't be enforcing it. I agree. It should be enforced. Unfortunately, it's not.
Adam, comparatively, um, may, it's okay, comparatively, uh, marijuana is legal federally. But the Supreme Court has given states the option at the state level of regulating it themselves.
So in Gonzalez versus Reich, which is the marijuana case, uh, what the court determined was actually is talking about interstate commerce. And so a federal law still prohibits marijuana because it talks about transport, delivery and interstate commerce. Uh, state law, to the contrary, if like domestically produced marijuana, wouldn't violate that federal law generally. And so again, that's an issue with uh, preemption and whether the interstate commerce is affected. Here fourteen sixty-one and sixty-two are specifically about interstate commerce, the carriage of the mail and transport and delivery of abortion devices and drugs in interstate commerce.
I'm fully aware, Mr. Craddock, but the the thought is if it's still illegal federally and you're saying that federal law trumps state law. Why, I mean, it, that's simply not the case when it comes to marijuana. Because it's controlled at the state level, similarly to abortion access, which is also controlled at the state level with the Supreme Court's recent decision, therefore it's controlled at the state level and federal level does not trump the state.
Yeah, so if I could just clarify, wh- what what the Supreme Court is saying is in in the marijuana cases is that it's fully all, it's all about interstate commerce. And so it's not that states can just decide, you know, marijuana illegal or illegal in interstate commerce. It's only domestically, so it's only, i- if it affects interstate commerce, that's still federal unlawful under federal law. Just as here, where we have interstate commerce implicated by the transport and delivery and carriage of devices and drugs intended to and designed to produce an abortion, that again is federal law that would trump any contrary state law.
Counselor Maestri, do you have anything to say?
Um, yeah, that's okay. Um, so what you're saying though, I understand what she's what she's saying. But we also, not every community has marijuana dispensaries in their cities. They choose to do that or not. And if we were to put this ordinance in place in Pueblo, it would really keep Dr. Carhart out of here. And if the pro-choice community wants to hit up their legislation legislators and get it regulated. Then, I mean, don't just stop at getting it legal, get it regulated so that women are safe. But I don't think we should be complicit with the state law because I think it's negligent that they didn't regulate the abortionist or the clinics. Which leads us to be open to the services of Dr. Carhart.
Counselor Tencio, did you have anything to say? Okay, uh, Counselor Flores.
Since this ordinance doesn't really affect whether or not a a woman in Colorado can make her own free will, free choice. If a woman in Pueblo wants an abortion, she could just drive thirty-five miles north to Colorado Springs and get one. Is it just, is this ordinance just to make it uncomfortable, you know, for women to make that choice? Is that what this is all about?
No, sorry. I I think that this ordinance is designed to prevent people like Carhart uh, from violating federal law within the city of Pueblo. And so it's simply to supplement enforcement of existing federal law that's on the books.
So this would be hanging over, whether it's Carhart or Smith or Jones. This uh, federal law would be hanging over their head. So effectively, it isn't about Carhart, it's about any abortion clinic that would be set up in Pueblo, right?
My understanding is that it currently, as it exists right now, it'd only affect Carhart as the only abortion provider in the city of Pueblo. Uh, but I I believe that this, you know, would have, in theory, applied to anyone who would violate federal law.
Thank you.
I want to, Counselor Warner.
Yeah, um, Mark, this question is probably for you, but um, these abortion clinics are cash only. That's my understanding. And they can do up to fifty to sixty abortions per day. So there there's a lot of motivation for these abortionists to continue. Do you have any idea how many abortions they do in Boulder every day at that abortion clinic?
I don't. Uh, from the abortion facilities I've been familiar with, I've seen numbers like about a hundred a week at times. Uh, and some even more than that. Uh, but this, in in a point was was made, uh, this is not something that would affect getting abortion in other places. Uh, when the ordinance passed in Lubbock, Lubbock wasn't saying you can't get an abortion anywhere. It's just uh, this was an issue of within the city limits. The the law that was passed applied just within the city limits. The same would apply here.
So I guess what I was getting at is that Car- Carhart has several different clinics and 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 making a ton of money, because I mean, abortion runs eight hundred to twelve hundred dollars. And um, it's cash. There's no insurance. There's no, I mean, that's a lot of money.
I think we're getting off topic. I want to be, I want to be um, also very, it's it's about the legislative session. It's or the legalities of the law. Counselor Tencio, and then we got to wrap up.
Yeah, is uh, if a doctor terminates a pregnancy. Other than calling it an abortion, let's say a DNC, let's say I'm playing golf and my doctor buddy uh, agrees to help me out because one of my relatives happens to get pregnant. And they call it a DNC, is that illegal? Or it's just a matter of, because you're cherry picking. Whether it's a DNC or an abortion, you're, it's still, as far as I'm concerned, terminating a life. You're, so you're against abortion, but you're not against uh, your doctor buddy doing his. And how many does, do they do on a daily basis? And how much do they charge?
Uh, Counselor Manatensia, I'm I'm a little puzzled by the question, because unless it's an abortion as defined in the ordinance or or under federal law, uh, this ordinance wouldn't apply. And so a DNC for, you know, to help with them to treat a miscarriage after the child has already tragically passed away, would not be affected by this ordinance whatsoever. Uh, but if it was a, you know, i- if if you sent or received in interstate commerce a device or drug designed to produce an abortion uh, with the purpose of producing an abortion. Uh, then that would uh, potentially create civil liability under the the proposed ordinance.
His intent wasn't to abort, his intent was to DNC.
Well, DNC stands for dilation and cut, cut, cutage. So it's just, it's just a script.
Okay, we we have to move on because our regular meeting will start nearish seven. So thank you, Mr. Dixon. Thank you, Mr. Mitchell, for zooming in today. And thank you, Mr. Craddock. Um, next on our agenda is um, going to be uh, the Reproductive Health Equity Act. So can I please have um, Majority House Leader Escar and Mr. Kogosik to the podium, please? Mr. Kogosik, whenever you're ready.
Thank you, uh, Madam Chair, members of council, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Representative Escar and I are going to talk about three things. Uh, I'll begin with talking about the federal abortion statutes. Fourteen sixty-one and fourteen sixty-two. I'll then talk about the proposed ordinance and then I will let Representative Escar talk about the Reproductive Health Equity Act, uh, which has been called uh, RIA. I would like to begin by thanking Mr. Mitchell and and Mr. Craddock for appearing. Needless to say, I respectfully disagree with everything they told you tonight. You're very familiar with fourteen sixty-one and fourteen sixty-two. Says that you cannot use interstate commerce to provide information, drugs or devices which aid uh, or are used in an abortion. So when we first read the statute uh, from Representative uh, Escar, R H E A, we thought, wow, this really, I thought, shut the door and lock the door on the right uh, to an abortion in Colorado. Uh, and it seemed to me to preempt any municipal interference with that. But I'll I'll let the drafter of the ordinance explain that uh, to you. I agree with her analysis. So the ordinance came from um, Councilman Maestri. And it was a, it was an interesting read. Um, I I brought in Trevor Gloss, who was the finest researcher I know. Uh, to find the statutes, um, section fourteen sixty-one and fourteen sixty-two, those are two criminal statutes. And they're really quite short. I mean, about a page each. So I said, let's find the cases that interpret this statute. They'll help us understand it. And guess what? We only found one case. In almost a hundred and fifty years, there's only one case. And our friends from Austin and Denver wants a city to enact a local ordinance implementing federal law. And they can't show you one case where it was successfully implemented, not one. And you had questions, Mr. Flores, tonight. Show me some cases. There are no cases. The only case we're. The only case we're aware of is the case of Boers versus United States. That's a federal Seventh Circuit opinion from nineteen fifteen. In that case, there was some ambiguous correspondence between a father and a doctor about terminating the father's daughter's pregnancy. The doctor was convicted under these statutes. But the Seventh Circuit said, no. That conviction was improper because there was no proof of an intent to actually perform an abortion. So that's the only case out there. And, and you know, Mr. Mitchell, Mr. Craddock, if they have other cases where this has been successfully prosecuted, I'd love to see him. So let's talk about the ordinance itself. Starting with section seven dash nine dash two, you're familiar with it. What it says basically is it's illegal under municipal law to violate fourteen sixty-one and fourteen sixty-two. Except, they added a third section, they said, "It shall be unlawful for any person to engage in conduct that aids or abets the violations of fourteen sixty-one or fourteen sixty-two." Now aiding and abetting, I think that's a pretty broad net. If you aid and abet, you could find yourself in Pueblo County District Court facing a hundred thousand dollar lawsuit. But that's, that's in our statute. That's what's before you tonight. But here's what really gets me about this whole approach, okay? We have three levels of government, as you well know, the federal, the state, and local. All right, the feds pass a statute, they provide for enforcement. That's in this statute, that's in fourteen sixty-one and fourteen sixty-two. The states pass a statute, they enforce it. But here, they're asking the city of Pueblo to give a private right of action to enforce a federal statute. I have never seen that before. And if they can show me a, a case or a statute where that has happened, I'm happy to take a look at it. But that's exactly what they want to do. They were unsuccessful in the state legislature. The right to choose folks won. They were unsuccessful with their initiative to the citizens of Colorado. The right to choose folks won. So now, being unsuccessful at the federal and state level, they're coming to our great city of Pueblo and saying, oh, by the way, even though the feds don't enforce it, would you enforce it by giving a private right of action to a private citizen? Let's talk about why I haven't found any cases. And they said, well, that's because of Roe v. Wade. Roe v. Wade, nineteen seventy-three, January nineteen seventy-three, established a limited federal right to an abortion. So they're saying there's no prosecution from nineteen seventy-three till today because of Roe v. Wade. But that's not quite accurate. Prior to Roe v. Wade, many states, California, New York, Illinois, and our own great state of Colorado authorized abortions. So why did President Nixon, who was a vehement anti-abortionist, why didn't he enforce fourteen sixty-one and fourteen sixty-two before the Roe v. Wade decision? I think it's because that statute is unconstitutional. I shared with you last Wednesday a letter in the Congressional Record from Attorney General Janet Reno to the Speaker of the House, it was in nineteen ninety-six. She said, "We're not going to enforce it because it's unconstitutional." Richard Nixon was a lawyer from Duke Law School, one of the best law schools, he knew it was unconstitutional too, even before Roe v. Wade. That's why he didn't enforce it. So why are we here tonight? They have been unsuccessful politically. They have been unsuccessful legislatively. So now, they're coming to Pueblo and saying, why don't we get Pueblo to enact this statute to give a private right of action to individuals? What's, what they're saying basically is, hey, President Biden, we don't like your politics, we don't like your pro-choice stance. So guess what? We're gonna give a private right of action in Pueblo, Colorado, to enforce a federal law. I don't think that's appropriate for municipal government. I have never heard of a city saying, hey, federal government, we don't like your enforcement, so guess what? We're gonna give a private right of action to one of our persons, one of our citizens, to enforce a federal law that you're not enforcing. If, if that's happened anywhere, I'd like to see it. I'd like to comment before I, I turn this over to Representative Escar about the Texas Heartbeat Act, Senate Bill Eight, which Mr. Mitchell passed. In that case, the legislature of Texas gave a private right of action to enforce a state statute. The Texas Supreme Court ruled five to four that that was okay, the law was not unconstitutional. Opponents took it up to the Supreme Court, and the Supreme Court didn't rule on the merits. They said, let this case work its way through the courts, the district courts, the appellate courts, the Court of Appeals, and then it will get to us. The US Supreme Court didn't say that this private right of action in order to get around constitutional protections is legal. They haven't reached the merits yet. And I think when they reach the merits, I, I think the result will be, you can't you can't bypass constitutional rights by giving a private party a private right of action. But here's my point, my point is it's one thing for the Texas legislature to say, you have a private right of action to enforce state law. But that's not the case here. What they're saying is you, city of Pueblo, third on the totem pole, underneath the feds, underneath the state, you have the right to enforce federal law. And that, to me, is legally unprecedented. And I want to leave time for questions. And now I'll turn it over to Representative Escar, who drafted the statute. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you all for serving. I know that you all are in for a very long night. And I'm familiar with what those nights look like, but I can't tell you how invaluable it is for you all to be able to sit through and listen to all of your constituents' concerns on both sides of this. So from one person who sat through long hearings to you all, thank you for your service, I appreciate it. I'm gonna try to quickly, as best as I can, go through why we drafted RIA, why we introduced it, a little bit about Colorado's background, and exactly what RIA does, and why it's in conflict directly with this ordinance specifically. And I hope I can answer your questions. I do want to preference, Counselor Manatensio, I am not an attorney. I have not been flown in from anywhere, I'm a Pueblo resident, born and raised, who was elected by the people of this town to represent us at the state, and that's what I have done. I was invited here as someone who actually helped draft the legislation that we are discussing today. So I just want to be completely clear with any questions I may receive, I am not an attorney. The reproductive health care is vital health care for every individual to be able to make their own decisions about what's best for themselves and their family, including whether to get an abortion in consultation with their health care providers. No one should have their most personal medical decisions controlled by politicians, neighbors, or complete strangers, but that's exactly what's been happening across the country. As of June of this year alone, seven hundred and seventy-four provisions have been introduced that would restrict access to reproductive health or curtail rights. Five hundred and fifty-two provisions have been introduced that would restrict access to abortion. Six hundred and thirty-four provisions restricting access to abortions have been enacted since the beginning of two thousand and eleven. Those provisions include criminal charges, civil charges, like the one in this ordinance, mandatory reporting of individuals who have an abortion, should we talk about privacy issues? An outright ban. Here in Colorado, during the twenty twenty election, Coloradans across party and county lines voted to defeat Proposition One-Fifteen, an abortion ban later in pregnancy, by nearly fifty-nine percent. In twenty oh-eight, twenty-ten, and twenty-fourteen, Coloradans again overwhelmingly rejected harmful and dehumanizing amendments to the state constitution that would have created fetal personhood and outlaw abortion in the state. The message sent by voters, our constituents here in Colorado, is clear. We trust individuals to make their own reproductive health care decisions free from political interference. Despite that, since I've served at the state level for eight years, we have seen forty-four different pieces of state legislation introduced that would restrict or eliminate abortion access for Coloradans. In twenty-twenty, sixty-four percent of Coloradans surveyed agreed with the statement that abortion should be legal in all cases or most cases with some restrictions. Any restrictions or bans upon our reproductive freedoms are out of touch with our electorate and inconsistent with Colorado's specifically, our values of individual freedom, liberty, and self-determination. We know what kind of care we need, and whether it's provided by a clinic or safe, or safely, effective, self-managed on our own, with the support of our community, it must be protected. That's why we brought RIA forward. And let me be clear, what RIA does, it's three things. It codifies into state law what the state of Colorado was already doing. Every individual, fundamental right to choose or refuse contraception. Every individual who becomes pregnant has a fundamental right to choose to continue a pregnancy and give birth or to have an abortion. And a fertilized egg, embryo, or fetus does not have independent rights under the laws of the state. That's what was happening in Colorado as it was. We saw the writing on the wall of what was coming down federally and decided to take action this year to protect Coloradans and continue being the state that we were, doing the laws that we had in place. In regards to this ordinance specifically, this ordinance directly violates RIA, which requires that, quote, "A public entity, you all, shall not deny, restrict, interfere with, or discriminate against an individual's fundamental right to have an abortion in the regulation or provision of benefits, facilities, services, or information." RIA also establishes that the right to access abortion care is a matter of statewide concern. That means that only the Colorado General Assembly or a statewide ballot initiative can take that right away. This is not within the purbiot of city council. We knew that these exact groups would come to Colorado to try to ban abortion in our communities. That's why we worked with legal experts to ensure that abortion access would remain a matter of statewide concern. This is a procedural issue, not a legal issue. The question is whether the city council can even introduce policy like this. The answer is they cannot. RIA is explicitly clear on that point. Municipalities like Pueblo that are organized under Home Rule Charter are free to legislate in matters of local concern, not statewide matters. That's in the Colorado Constitution, Article Twenty, Section Six B. The Colorado Supreme Court recognizes three categories of regulatory matters. Matters of local concern, matters, matters of statewide concern, and matters of mixed state and local concern. In matters of statewide concern like the matter of abortion, the General Assembly may adopt legislation, and home rule municipalities are without power to act unless authorized by the Constitution or state statute. The General Assembly, again, with the passing of RIA, declared that abortion is a matter of statewide concern, and we did not authorize city councils to take that right away from their constituents. In fact, I passed out the actual bills, four pages long, hope you had an opportunity to read it, I know you were inundated with things to read this past week. But on page four, section two, "Nothing in this part four may be construed to authorize a public entity to burden an individual's fundamental rights relating to reproductive health care." If a clinic cannot receive the materials that they need to perform an abortion, that is directly a burden to an individual's fundamental right relating to reproductive health care. We wrote RIA to ensure that it complied with all existing Colorado and federal statutes. The Attorney General has said that he will defend RIA. Abortion is a legal medical procedure. Keep that in mind, it is a legal medical procedure regulated by the State Medical Board, and abortion pills and other medical devices are lawful items for legal health care. Abortion is health care. RIA was supported by the American Academy of Pediatrics, the Colorado Academy of Family Physicians, the Colorado Nurses Association, the Colorado Obstetrical and Gynecological Society, and the Colorado Public Health Association. It was vetted and supported by legal groups like the Colorado Center on Law and Policy, the Colorado Women's Bar Association, and the ACLU. And just last month, the American Medical Association, an historically conservative group, adopted new policies opposing restrictions on abortion, including new ethical guidance explicitly allowing physicians to perform the procedure in keeping with good medical practice, even in states that ban it. This is a solution in search of a problem, and it goes too far. Banning abortion in Pueblo will harm our community, not help it. I trust the people in my community to make their own decisions about their reproductive health care. We are not going to sue our neighbors for a hundred thousand dollars to block them from accessing the health care they need. We are not going to sue our doctors that we trust with our health care. Puebloans overwhelmingly support abortion access and reject abortion bans like these. Our voters rejected the most recent abortion ban in twenty-twenty here in Pueblo alone by a strong margin. The majority of your constituents don't want this. This was brought forward from somebody from another state, let's be very clear. This is being orchestrated by these out-of-state actors who admittedly travel the country trying to pass local abortion bans like this. Please don't let them bring these Texas-style politics into Pueblo. Abortion regulation is not within the scope of city council's authority. The Supreme Court ruling in Dobbs versus Jackson relinquished abortion regulations and protections back to the states. And Colorado settled this matter via the Reproductive Health Equity Act this year. I'll try my best to answer any questions, knowing full well I was just a part of the drafting of the legislation, but did not go to law school.
Thank you, Mr. Escar and Mr. Kogosik. I want to remind people in the audience to please be respectful for those who are speaking and have to have respect in the chambers. What questions are there from counsel? Counselor Tencio?
Ms. Escar, I have the most respect for you, I always have. You brought more legal advice and more legal information in one breath than the person from Texas did all the time that he's ever been talking. So I would never want to restrict you, you brought some really good information. I have one question, Mr. Kogosik. Yeah, I know it's a stretch, and I know people don't want to talk about it, but if I allow this abortion clinic to go in with my vote, can some yahoo out there file a lawsuit for one hundred thousand dollars or more against me for allowing abortions, aiding and abetting abortions? That's my particular interpretation. Am, am I wrong? Or, I, I understand, anybody can file suit against anybody else for whatever. Am I wrong? Or I understand anybody can file suit against anybody else for whatever reason. I understand that. But am I codifying the ability for somebody to do that?
Well, that assumes that this ordinance will take effect despite your no vote. Okay, and legislators, because that's what you are tonight, have legislative immunity. So unless you participated in the elective abortion process, I don't think you can be sued.
Thank you. I knew that, but I wanted the answer from these other people, which they're so vague, it's unbelievable.
Counselor Flores?
Yep, thank you. Can you expand on the potential, if this ordinance would have passed, would you expand on the potential that the Colorado Attorney General would sue the city of Pueblo under this RIA Act?
So the conversations I've had with the Attorney General's office, who actually helped us draft this piece of legislation to be sure that we were being legal in all matters pertaining to this. He has stated time and time again publicly that he would defend the Reproductive Health Equity Act for any reason.
And, and does that mean that he could potentially sue us in, in asking us to reverse this ordinance?
I am not an attorney, and I don't speak for the Attorney General by any means, but I do believe that this leaves the door open for that possibility.
You're lucky to see me because to your left is an attorney.
Exactly.
I think I can say with some confidence that if this passes tonight, we will be sued before Christmas.
Thank you.
Counselor Mashi?
Mr. Kogosik, do you believe that we, as members of city council, are bound by oath to support and defend the constitution?
Yeah, you're, you're bound by your oath to support both the federal and state constitutions.
And what is preemption? What does that mean to you?
Preemption means that local ordinances like this one, this is a local ordinance, we're amending the municipal code that this ordinance is preempted by state law.
And the federal law in the ordinance, you say that it's unconstitutional.
In my opinion, yes.
Why do you think, who, who would remove that from the books? Like, you say it's a law that's just not really needed on the books. Who would remove that from the books?
No, I, I, I think that the 1461 and 1462 are unconstitutional because they're so broad.
Who would remove those from the books? Who, who'd remove that, take that out of law?
Either the court or Congress.
Why do you think they haven't done that?
I don't know.
They stop of your opinion that it's unconstitutional?
Well, I guess I
I mean, you come with opinions, you came with opinions. What is your opinion on?
Well, I, I think Dobbs is unconstitutional, too. I think there is a right of privacy, and there is a right to health care.
They cite that
But the Supreme Court said no.
Did they not cite Dobbs? The reason for Dobbs was that the 14th Amendment does not support abortion?
I think Roe v. Wade was properly decided.
So is all of this based on your thoughts? All of your advice tonight is based on your opinion? I want to know why you took us into the back room on a closed session because you were giving us opinion, but you're sitting out here tonight giving us opinion publicly? What, I, I
Because I'm not giving
I want to try to understand that because
Because I can give an opinion without giving legal advice. And I will not give you legal advice publicly. I gave you legal advice in that executive session.
Telling us that we're going to, if we enact this ordinance, that we're going to be sued, isn't that legal advice?
No. That's an opinion. Legal advice is to tell you what to do. I gave you that advice.
Well, you also noted it in public that you, like, when you posted it, it said that you advised us not to vote for it.
Yes, that's right. Yeah, I'll bring it up. It's in my report that we recommend against adopting this ordinance.
Take precedence over state and city law?
Yes.
Okay, so if we were to enact federal law here, it would take precedence over state and city law?
No, only, only Congress can enact federal law. You cannot enact federal law.
We could vote it in, be part of our ordinance.
No, you're, you're, you're passing a local ordinance when I
With federal law in it, correct?
Yes, you're trying.
Now, I'm asking you, if we are to pass an ordinance with federal law in it, does it not?
Is it legal? And the answer is no, because of state preemption.
So it does, it's not, it doesn't override state law? Is that what you're saying?
No, this ordinance tonight does not override state law. State law says
The law quoted in the ordinance, does it not override state law? Does it take precedence over state law?
Okay, so you're saying this 1461 and 1462 take precedence over the Health Equity Act?
Correct.
Yes, no, because I think that 1461 and 1462 are unconstitutional.
So that's your opinion? They haven't been deemed unconstitutional by any court, and it's, that's your opinion?
Correct. The only case that, that we found did not uphold 1461.
Maybe no one ever enforced it. I mean, maybe it was enforced or put into place, but nobody challenged it. Because aren't cases based off being challenged or challenges?
Well, if it would be either, no, that's not true. You can challenge it or you can enforce it. You can indict somebody. The feds indicted this doctor in 1915.
In place.
And in 1915, the, the court said, no, Feds, you got it wrong.
You can put a federal law in place. And if someone is to break that law, we don't really know about it until there's, until they fight that law, correct? Till they challenge that law?
No, there has to be a lawsuit filed.
Why would there have to be a lawsuit? There's not always. I mean, in a criminal case.
There's always a lawsuit in a criminal case. Always.
Okay. Please explain, is it, are private rights like this, I mean, are, are private rights like this unusual? Cases where, I mean
The only time I've ever seen this is in Texas and here. They're very unusual. Extremely unusual.
I really actually really wish counsel would have taken some strong consideration in Dr. Carhart and him coming here and working together, and maybe we could have all sat down and talked this out on how to do this. You know, we, there are only four late-term abortionists in the country. We have one in this state already, and now we bring Dr. Carhart to the table. There are, there were 13,000 late-term abortions.
Point of order, Ms. Chairman Martinez, we're not talking about Dr. Carhart. We're talking about this specific ordinance. You wanted to talk about that.
The, the ordinance is all about protecting women here in Pueblo.
No, it has everything to do with interstate commerce and licensing and suing. It has nothing to do with Dr. Carhart. It's your ordinance. You should know it.
I brought the ordinance forward because we didn't have regulation in place doing, taking care of what's going on when it comes to abortion procedures in this state. And so I will continue to fight this however we need to, because
Then stick to the subject.
I am sticking to the subject, Larry. I'm asking that we put into place an ordinance to protect the health of women receiving the procedure, because state legislators have not put regulations in place regarding the safety of women.
I want to make sure that other counselors get the opportunity to ask Counselor Warner, do you have any questions?
Well,
Your mic, your mic.
My mic. It's my understanding that out of the 61 cities that have passed this, there have been no lawsuits filed. That's my understanding.
Well, I, I think we have a great Attorney General. In fact, I was very happy to beat his office in court on the sales tax issue. But, no, he'll sue us, and I think it's his duty to sue us. It's his duty to defend state law.
And I wonder how many of those 61 cities that this has passed in where there was a state law, like what we enacted here in RIA as well. That's where I think the conflict is, where you haven't seen the lawsuits. Whereas the Attorney General's job is to defend the Colorado law. That's why he would have to sue.
It's too bad that RIA has come in and done that, because just like with marijuana, if we choose not to have a dispensary, we should have the choice to not have an abortion clinic. You say it's going to harm the women of Pueblo. That's your statement. We haven't had one here in all of these years, all of these years.
I agree.
And everyone's gone to the Springs.
They've gone if they have transportation. They've gone if they have time off of work. They've gone if they have the financial ability to do so.
Well, I know, but your three regulations, two of them restrict receiving financial aid from receiving the procedure, and now, you know, so I don't know, I don't, I don't know that it was, you know, now we have to worry about gas money? You know, I don't know, I don't believe that that's, you know, it, it doesn't pertain to this. If you're not worrying about the procedure being paid for, why are you worried about the gas money?
Because that's an added cost on top of the procedural cost, man.
Okay, so we're 33% in the last year abortion. Our abortion rate has gone up 33% because of neighboring states and their laws. Do you, do you, do you know of Dr. Carhart?
I don't.
So are you concerned if he doesn't have a record that he, he has, well, he does have a record of permanent injury to women and causing death?
My concern tonight is this city ordinance you all are trying to pass that is in direct violation of the statewide Reproductive Health Equity Act.
That you put into place without regulations of abortionists and abortion clinics.
So let me just be clear. We don't license medical offices in the state of Colorado. The doctors that operate in these medical offices are the ones that are regulated. They are licensed and regulated by medical boards. That is across the board, whatever type of medical professional you are.
The doctor holds a license. Dr. Carhart holds the license for this facility. He's 83 years old. He doesn't live in this state. There's nothing that says that anyone who works at that clinic has to be a licensed medical person, correct?
I'm not, I, I again, am not an attorney. I'm here to discuss RIA and how the ordinance
You know your regulations. You know your own regulations, right?
The regulations, let me be clear. The regulations that you talk about are in the Colorado constitution. That was not regulations that state legislators either put in or didn't put in. That was into
But you could have.
We cannot change the constitution. Only the voters of Colorado can change the constitution.
So then you wrote a law, you, you wrote a law without any protection for women in place?
Our law actually protects women.
Protects women what? Rights?
Protects women to receive the necessary medical attention that they are looking for in a safe, legal manner.
All right. We have to move on. It's, we're 12 minutes past the agenda, and it's already going to be a long night. So Ms. Escar, Mr. Kogosik, thank you so much for discussing the Reproductive Health Equity Act. I want to just give some housekeeping for those in the work session. It sounds like after this work session, chambers will be fully cleared. And after the, the chambers are cleared, those that have signed up to be in observance for the regular meeting will then get re-invited back to come sit during, in, in the chambers during the regular meeting. So we will take a brief 10-minute recess-ish while we clear the chambers and bring back those that have signed up for the regular meeting. Otherwise, it's 7:13 PM, and I conclude this work session.